Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the July 17, 2018 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. And this morning, we're very blessed to have Dr. William Camp from the Roswell Street Baptist Church lead us with an indication, and then I'll lead us in the place of allegiance. So those who are willing and able, please stand. Dr. Camp?
Let us pray together. Father, God, how great it is to be where we are today, all of us here. The committee, the people who have come to listen and to share. Thank you for all of them, their interest and their wisdom. But God, we must remember that knowledge and experience comes from us or to us. Wisdom comes from God to us. So I pray for wisdom today in every decision and every word that's said. May you bless everyone here. May you bless our county, our city. We thank you for the staff. Thank you for the board here today. Bless them as they serve you. In God's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to Jason Camp, to Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a few procedures for today that we need to go over. Each case is called in numerical order. When the case is called, the applicant is requested to stand and signify that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call for any opposition and signify that they are here so they can be counted for the record. After the counting of the opposition, the applicant and any opposition will be requested to come forward and be sworn in so that they can present testimony to the board. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. You need to keep in mind that each side gets 10 minutes to state your case or your concerns. There is not a rebuttal process, so convey all of your information to the board within your 10-minute period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak, then you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side only gets 10 minutes. You don't want to cover the same thing twice. Then after both sides have their 10 minutes' presentation, the board will start to deliberate about the case. From the deliberation, they may request one of the speakers to come back to the podium for additional information. After that, the board will render its decision. There are parts to today's agenda, and the first item is the consent agenda, followed by the continued and held cases, and the regular cases, and other business. And I have a couple of announcements, Mr. Chairman. The first item is a withdrawn case, Z3. Punky Poo LLC was withdrawn without prejudice at the planning commission hearing, will not be heard today.
Thank you.
In addition, there's been a request to add other business items, 36 and other business item 37, to the consent agenda.
Okay, we can make... You want us to make a motion now to add those?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to just make sure that there's no one in opposition? I don't think there is for Z36, or Other Business 36.
Is there anybody here in opposition to Other Business 36?
Okay, then I make a motion to add Other Business 36 to consent.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
A discussion, call the question. Passes five to zero. And what was the other business item?
Thirty-seven.
All right. Mr. Merle? Is there anybody here in opposition to Other Business 37? Seen none.
I'd like to make a motion that we add Other Business Item 37 to the consent agenda.
We have a second, in discussion, call the question. Passes five to zero. Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to go through the continued or held cases.
Sure.
Case number Z56, 2017, Oak Hall Companies, was continued by staff until the August 7 Planning Commission hearing. Also, Z8, 2018, Lloyd Development Services, was continued by staff until the August 7 hearing by the Planning Commission. Also, Z20, 2018, Elevation Development Group, was continued by staff until the April 7, August... Until the August 7 Planning Commission hearing. Case Z21, 2018, W. Reed Connings Mark, was continued by staff until the August 7 Planning Commission hearing. It will not be heard today. Z26, Austel Cosmetic Dentistry, was previously continued by staff until the August 7 Planning Commission hearing. Z32, In-Line Communities, previously continued by staff until the August 7, 2018 Planning Commission hearing. Z37, 2018, Winchester Parkway, was held by the Planning Commission until their August 7 hearing. Case Z39, Mableton Center Incorporated, was continued by staff until the August 7 Planning Commission hearing. Z40, 2018, Jim Chapman Communities, continued by staff until the September 4 Planning Commission hearing. Z42, 2018, Chance Powers Ferry LLC, was held by the Planning Commission until their August 7 Planning Commission hearing. Z43, Century Communities of Georgia LLC, was continued by staff until the August 7 Planning Commission hearing. Case Z44, 2018, Trayton Homes, was continued by staff until the August 7, 2018 Planning Commission hearing. Other business item 28 of 2018, Reyes Morales, was continued by staff until the August 21 Board of Commissioners hearing. Other business item 32, 2018, Gertrude S. Panu, was continued by staff until August 21 Board of Commissioners hearing. Other business item 24, TCP Investments LLC, was continued by staff until the August 21 Board of Commissioners hearing. And other business item 35, Buckner Crossroads LLC, was continued by staff until the August 21, 2018 Board of Commissioners hearing. And those items will not be heard today. And with that, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. First item on the consent agenda is Z30, the Key Auto Collision. That was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, subject to site plan received by the zoning division on February 28, 2018, on file in zoning division with the following changes. The abandoned gas pump and underground storage tank to be removed within 60 days of the Board of Commissioners' final decision. The metal trailer fenced frame awning and wood shed in the northwest corner of the site to be removed within 60 days of the Board of Commissioners' final decision. The area covered by awning attached to the east of the main building may be converted to an enclosed building. Note, building permits are required for the conversion for the following uses only: light automotive repair establishment, emissions and inspection stations; non-automotive repair establishments; office service and supply establishments; special exception use of specialized contractors with district commissioner approval of occupants; special exception use of automotive paint and body repair shop for applicant only. Item three, if code enforcement issues, a notice of violation related to automotive paint and body repair shop use and code violations are not corrected within 10 days, then the zoning division manager may post the property and schedule a show cause hearing before the Board of Commissioners to consider additional restrictions or elimination of the special exception uses. Item four, outdoor storage allowed only under the canopy area attached to the western portion of the building. The area to be fenced to contain storage under the roof. Outdoor storage is only for the temporary storage of scrap metals awaiting for recycling. Five, parking plan to be submitted for approval by the zoning division manager within 30 days of the Board of Commissioners' final decision. Parking lot to be patched as needed and striped in accordance with approved parking plan within 60 days of the Board of Commissioners' final decision. All vehicles to be parked and striped spaces in accordance with county ordinance. Six, all vehicles parked outside to have current registration with the exception that up to three vehicles which do not have current registration may be parked on the property for a maximum of 30 days. All vehicles currently located on the property that don't have current registration to be removed within 30 days of the Board of Commissioners' final decision. All dumpsters to be located within a masonry dumpster enclosure with steel gates which conform to county development standards. All repair work and painting to be done inside the building. The paint booth to be located inside the enclosed portion of the building. Wave the setback from the required 15 feet to 4 feet adjacent to the northern property line for existing building only. Wave the maximum allowable impervious service from 70% to 99% for existing improvements only. No vehicle storage allowed on the property. The district commissioner may approve minor modifications except for those that increase the overall building square footage, change that is in conflict with an express stipulation or condition of zoning, or C, requires a variance or violates Cobb County ordinance. Staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Jason, excuse me.
Sure.
That is a District Four case, and I'm curious to know if the applicant is here. Hi, Mr. Castillo. May I speak to you, please, if you can come to the podium?
No, I didn't.
Oh.
I didn't ask.
You didn't? Okay, please do.
Is there any opposition for case Z30? You're not seeing any.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Castillo. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi. I am not inclined to hear this case today. I had a meeting scheduled with you last week, and I didn't see you, and I followed up with you by phone, and I didn't hear back from you, and...
Okay, may I inquire as to how the meeting was scheduled because I did not receive many calls? The owner, who most unfortunate, wasn't able to attend today because he had a surgery due, he's also on the application. I am the applicant.
You are the applicant. What's your name, sir?
DeNeer.
DeNeer, and who's the... My... I'd have to refer to my assistant, but I did also follow up with the phone number on the application and didn't hear back. Galt Porter, who serves on the planning commission, did a tremendous job of adding conditions to this application. But as you can see, Powell Drive is a serious... Has serious challenges, and from viewing the property and from assessing our experience with other zoning cases on there, there are just some additional questions I have for you before this moves forward.
Okay.
What I'd like to do is continue this case until our August zoning date. You and I should be able to have an opportunity to communicate.
That'd be great.
Between now and then, a sit-down. My intern Shannon is here. If Shannon, if you can help me in getting his contact information, we'll set that meeting up.
That'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue this case. That was my motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Call the question.
To the August zoning hearing, yes, thank you.
Yeah, it passes. Are we also going to put a permanent code enforcement office there to enforce all these stipulations?
We need a little bit more than that, but yeah.
Okay, Jason, dig me out of this hole, quickly.
Okay, trying. I forgot a couple of announcements, I'm sorry. We asked you to turn your cellphones off or turn them on vibration so that they don't interfere with the broadcast. And any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If, within the two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 or more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners, additional information concerning this announcement is on the table in the back of the room. And also, any interested parties, that information is due to the Board of Commissioners on the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after Wednesday, Wednesday's due date, may or may not be heard by the Board of Commissioners. And now, back to the consent agenda. The next item is Z38, Mequity Acquisitions. Requesting rezoning from...
Mr. Chairman, Jason, before you begin, there's a slop associated with this also.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
The zoning case is Z38, requesting rezoning from ONI to RRC for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-storage facility in landlots 1056 and 1057 of the 17th District, located off Private Eastman on the northeast side of Powersbury Road and on the north side of Interstate North Parkway. Planning Commission recommended approval, subject to site plan received by the zoning division on May the 11, 2018, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications on file in the zoning division. Letters of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr. dated May the 11, 2018, and June 25, 2018, on file in the zoning division. Use is limited to a climate-controlled self-service storage facility only. Variance is listed in the zoning division comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations, and the applicant's representatives present. Is there anyone here opposed to Z38? I'm not seeing anyone.
Mr. Chairman, Jason, in here, you referenced the letter from Mr. Samms dated May 11, 2018, and June 25, 2018. I did not have that. I just want to make sure that the clerks have... You have both letters, okay. And the only other thing I would like to add to that is that District Commissioner has approval of the final obligations.
Final obligations?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you want me to read the slop involved with that now?
Sure.
Okay.
That's a reasonable approach.
The companion case to this rezoning case is slop six, Mequity Acquisitions. It was recommended for approval by the planning commission, subject to site plan received by the zoning division on May the 11, 2018, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications on file in the zoning division. Letters of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr. dated May the 11, 2018, and June 25, 2018. Use is limited to climate-controlled self-storage facility only. District Commissioner to approve final architecture. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Now, was there any opposition to slop six? Let the record show, there's no opposition. The next zoning case on the consent agenda is Z41, Sri Mandir Incorporated. Requesting rezoning from R. Tweney and G.C. to G.C. for the purpose of an assembly hall and warehouse storage and landlot 107 of the 17th District, located on the north side of Lyons Club Drive, west of Glora Drive. The planning commission recommended deletion to LRO, subject to letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Adam J. Rosen dated June 26, 2018, which is on file in the zoning division. The following uses only: houses of worship, nursery schools and child daycare centers, and professional offices. Wave the LRO architectural restrictions for the existing building. Any variance is necessary for the as-built condition. A minimum of 60 parking spaces to be provided for existing conditions. Zoning Division Manager to determine parking requirements of any additional occupants, and said occupants will only be allowed if zoning Division Manager determines adequate parking is available. If a commercial use of the property is approved, zoning Division to notify the tax commissioner of the non-exempt use of the property. All days referenced in these stipulations shall be from the Board of Commissioners' final determination of this application. Also, landscape oversight committee shall be formed by the applicant. The committee shall consist of one member from the applicant, one member from the Mableton Improvement Coalition, and one member from Community Development. A landscape plan which has been approved by the landscape oversight committee shall be presented to the district commissioner for final approval within 90 days. All landscaping shall be fully installed within 180 days. A minimum of 10-foot-wide landscape enhancement strip shall be installed adjacent to the Lyons Club Drive right-of-way. Department of Transportation to approve the number and location of commercial driveways allowed on Lyons Club Drive. Applicants shall remove all excess paving from the right-of-way and replace the appropriate landscape treatment as determined by DOT within 180 days. The applicant is to submit a parking plan to the zoning division for approval within 180 days. Applicants shall repave and stripe the parking lot with 365 days. I guess that means within 365. Note, due to the poor condition of the existing paving, repaving is required. Building is to be repainted within 365 days. Building color to be approved by the district commissioner. Loading dock truck, truck well to be removed and filled to parking lot grade level within 365 days. Area to be paved or landscaped. All other debris on the private... On the property to be removed within 10 days. The district commissioner may approve minor modifications except for those that increase the overall building square footage, cause a reduction in the size of an approved buffer, or change that... Or a change that is in conflict with an express stipulation or condition of zoning, or one that requires a variance or violates Cobb County ordinance. Staff recommendations and comments not otherwise in conflict. Is there any opposition to Z41?
I just have a question. Can you have... This is a church that's going to be asking also to use part of its property for commercial purposes. In my simple world, it's all or nothing. If it's a church, then it should all be exempt from taxes. Can you mix... Can you mix nonprofit and profit?
I don't know the answer to that. That would be a tax assessor issue.
Okay.
But as I recall from the planning commission...
Right.
They're not sure exactly what uses are going to even go into this building yet. They're only using a small portion of it currently for services.
Right.
So it might be that some of those other uses are church-related, but again, it would be a tax assessor.
I don't oppose the zoning. I just... To me, if it's a church, then it's all church, and so it's all tax exempt.
And I think Mr. Porter anticipated that that would be an issue, and that's why there's the condition regarding to notify the tax commissioner's office.
That's what caught my attention, though, is that...
Right.
My... The way it was written, it senses that you can tax a church property.
I know that... I have read cases where there are uses that are church uses, that are commercial, but I don't know how it works with this being the same building, unfortunately.
I'll let the tax commissioner sort that out. I just was curious about that.
There was no opposition to that.
Chairman, may I have the applicant approach?
Sure.
Thank you. Good morning, Adam. I received correspondence from Adam this morning, and there was some communication with him and the Mableton Improvement Coalition as follows up in a meeting that I had with the applicant to add some stipulations and modify some of these stipulations. So I'd like for those to be read into the record.
Sure, have you do it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Adam Rosen for Z41 this morning. Two changes that we're requesting and that we have discussed and agreed with the Mableton Improvement Coalition to make are as follows. One is to allow for the additional use of assembly hall to also be one of the additional uses as already recommended for approval by your planning commission. The condition for that assembly hall use will be that all events shall end no later than midnight on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights, and during the week consisting of Monday through Thursday, assembly hall hours of operation shall be from 9:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. No parking along or on Lyons Club Drive or at adjoining properties unless prior written approval is obtained. The other change that we've requested and discussed and agreed upon is to extend the time to repave the parking lot to two years instead of the originally recommended 365 days.
And just a little bit of background, this facility's been there for about 10 years, and they're limited monetarily. And this came... This zoning came before us because there were some requirements from the fire department, and they have considerable expense to be able to meet that. So I'm not in the favor of putting in stipulations that are going to be a challenge for this congregation to meet in light of the past history on the property, but to be able to be somewhat flexible to put in conditions so that over time, as there is improvement, the site will be improved.
Part of it is commercial, they might be able to put somebody in sentence.
And that is exactly why they asked for part of it to be commercial, to better support the property. Along those lines, there's a couple of additional stipulations that I wanted to add and modify. One stipulation was a staff comment is to recommend sidewalk curb and gutter, and to modify that so that sidewalk, curb, and gutter are to be considered upon redevelopment of the site. Or to be recommended... Let me use the DOT's language, to be recommended upon redevelopment of the site. Also, stipulations eight, nine, and 10 refer to a landscape strip and to the repaving of the site. And what I want to do is simplify this a bit in light of their circumstance, and to provide that the landscape oversight committee shall... Shall provide recommendation to the district commissioner. And district commissioner shall approve final landscape plan and parking plan. In consideration of a 10-foot landscape enhancement strip where feasible, and that incorporates stipulation number nine. And to replace appropriate landscape treatment as determined by DOT, and where also feasible, will refer to stipulation number 10. Thank you. Those are all my changes. I don't even think I made that in the form of a motion.
Did you get all those changes?
What I can do is I can forward you Adam Rosen's email from this morning, and it has this document.
When I make a motion for consent, I'll just say as revised.
Okay.
And include everything.
Thank you.
Next case on consent is Z45, Lost Mountain Nursery Incorporated. Applicant is requesting rezoning from R. 30 to NRC for the purpose of a retail plant nursery and landlots 80 and 143 of the 19th District, located on the south side of Dallas Highway and on the north side of Papa Springs Road. The planning commission recommends deletion to special land use permit, subject to this applicant and this use only. The as-built drawing is shown in the zoning analysis on file in the zoning division. Is there anyone opposed to Z45? The record show there's no one opposed.
Commissioner, Westford is coming.
Thank you. Just for the benefit of the public and the board, I wanted to give a little background on this particular one. Nursery's been operating here for over 30 years without any issues in the neighborhood, and they've continually come back for a lup over the years, and we were trying to search for a solution to keep them from having to do that. So one of the ideas would be to delete... To change the zoning to NRC from R. 30. I've said that the zoning in R. 30, I think, provides the most protection to the surrounding neighbors, and if we allow this slop limitation for this use only, then that provides protection around there, and it keeps them from having come back over and over again. And this respected nursery's been there, as I said, for 30 years, and so I certainly recommend deleting it to a special land use permit for that purpose, and leave the underlying zoning as R. 30, sir.
Why don't we just... Why don't we just rezonate during the annual comprehensive plan review?
Because it's R. 30, and it's surrounded by other residential. We don't want to... That opens it up to different uses. Yeah, and we don't... We just change the land use. So if we leave it R. 30 with a slop, then that allows them one use only, so if they change it... So we rezonate, they could sell it tomorrow, and then all of a sudden, you've got all sorts of things that could go in there that we don't have any control over. This way, anything other than this owner has to come back before this board.
Okay. But the neighbors are happy with it.
Okay, good. The next case on consent is Z46, Rob and Agnostis. The applicant is here. The applicant is here. Requesting rezoning from R20 to RE5 for the purpose of single-family residential subdivision in landlot 694 of the 17th District, located on the northwest corner of Cooper Lake Road and Weaver Street. The planning commission recommends approval subject to site plan received by the zoning division on May 2nd, 2018, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Lots will be no less than 50 feet in width at the building line. Lots will be a minimum of 7,000 square feet. Final home elevations, including the maximum height of the houses not to exceed 35 feet, to be approved by the district commissioner. The homes will have a minimum of a two-car garage and shall have a minimum 2,500 square foot of heated and cooled living area. Landscape plan to be reviewed by the county arborist, which includes fencing and planting sufficient to screen proposed alley from adjacent neighbors to the west, with final approval by the district commissioner. Applicant and/or developer to contribute to the county $8,000 per lot, which represents a proportional share of the cost of improvements Cobb County has made to the right-of-way. Applicant to establish mandatory homeowners association with restrictive covenants. When a house is vacated, the owner will immediately place a no trespassing sign on the property and will board the house up within 30 days. All septic tanks will be pumped out by a plumbing company before grading the lots. Applicant agrees to adhere to the noise ordinance relative to construction. Detention pond walls, or wall, if required, are to be faced with stone or other decorative material compatible with the home exteriors. If fence is required around all or part of the detention pond, it shall be constructed of decorative wrought iron or cast aluminum. Individual home driveways between the common driveway and each home to be constructed of permeable pavers to reduce project impervious surface. Variance is listed in the zoning division comments and recommendations with the following changes. The impervious surface limitation required at 40% to be adhered to by the developer 7er. Delete variance number three. Delete variance number five. Historic preservation comments and recommendations. Fire department comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict with approved site plan. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is there any opposition to Z46? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few additions here. I think we all received a email from Mary Rose Barnes, and I think the first one I'm going to change here is going to cover most of that, but that would be that all the previous stipulations from Z71 of 2006 also apply. And this is just the final piece on, on Weaver Street. Also, just because I don't remember if they're in there, but no construction parking on Weaver Street, Manor Street, or Cooper Lake Road. Renderings and elevations be approved by the district commissioner. Construction hours of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday with no construction work on Sunday, and all residential lots to be fully sited.
Okay. Number 10, says a plumbing company, but the guy that did mine is a plumbing guy, but he's a septic, can we just say an appropriate company?
That's fine. Yeah, number 10, just change it to read, "All septic tanks will be pumped out." I just would say that, and not even specify who, just say, "Will be pumped out by, before grading lots."
Okay. A small thing, but. Okay, did you get those changes? We're good? Okay, Jason. Did you have a comment?
No. None of them does have a name.
No, no, it just says plumbing company. Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Next case is LUP8, Jeffrey C. Smith. The applicant is requesting a renewal of a land use permit for the purpose of selling produce in landlot 1054 of the 19th District, located on the northeast side of Ostale Powder Springs Road, south of McKay Road. The planning commission recommends approval for 24 months, subject to fruit stand to be maintained at the side of the primary structure. Off-street parking and turnaround space to be provided to the side and rear of the existing structures. Business activity limited to spring and summer months. And Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Record show the applicant is here. Is there any opposition to LUP8? Let the record show there's no opposition.
Commissioner Cooper does comment?
Yes, just to the applicant, thank you for the service you provide. This has been LUP that we've continued to renew year or every other year after every other year, and just thank you for that service that you're providing the residents of that area.
I think that's, that's it. Oh, I missed, okay, sorry, I missed that.
All right. The next item is other business item 33, BRD Company Incorporated. Is to consider a stipulation amendment regarding Z44, 2014, for property located on the south side of Circle 75 Parkway and on the north side of Interstate 285, located in landlots 914 and 915 of the 17th District. Staff recommends approval subject to tract H, permitted to increase the building height 120 feet above the stipulated maximum height as stated in the other business application, and all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Is anyone here opposed to the other business item 33? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Are we all good?
We have the two that were, that were added.
Oh, that's right. I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're all here to help me here.
Other business item 36. 36 and 37. Other business 36 is to consider a site plan approval for binding storage LLC regarding rezoning application Z16 and SLUP4, 2018, for property located on the north side of Mount Wilkinson Parkway, on the east side of Spring Hill Parkway, and on the west side of I-285 in landlot 844 of the 17th District. The staff would recommend approval with the attachments that were made part of the other business application. Is the applicant here for other business 36? Applicant is here. Is anyone opposed to other business item 36? Let the record show there's two people in opposition.
What I would ask is, they must have come in after we asked earlier. Where's Garvis? Could you get with them and see if, if it's just a question that you can work out?
Go ahead to the next one. The next one, other business item number 37, was for the purpose to consider a site plan amendment for Twillinger Papa's care of Gray regarding rezoning application Z73 of 2013 and Z26 of 2007, for property located on the south side of Gray Street and on the west side of Hidden Forest Court in landlots 507 of the 16th District. The staff would recommend approval with the addition of stormwater management comments and recommendations and the items contained in the other business packet. Is the applicant here for other business 37? The record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone opposed to other business 37? Let the record show there's no opposition.
Okay. What I'd like to do is, let's just take a five-minute recess, and I'll let you go see, yeah, see what's going on in the back. Stipulations for, will be 36.
Okay. And talking with the two folks in opposition, their concerns are about the, the traffic coming down Spring Hill Parkway and potential traffic coming out of this, which, if the board remembers, that entrance has already been approved as part of the original zoning. But what I'd like to do is add two conditions. One, that Cobb County Police go out at this point and just kind of check the speed on Spring Hill Parkway, because one of the concerns is the speed of the traffic. And the second is, once this project is constructed, that DOT staff will go out for, I don't know how, what kind of period you want to do, but we need to check to make sure that there is not a conflict with the traffic going in and out of this development on Spring Hill Parkway with the, the traffic coming from Home Depot headquarters. So either with the, the strips that you put across, but basically the DOT will do a study periodic for the next year, like every three months or every six months, just to make sure that it's not a problem.
Yeah, I know Home Depot during, at least at the end of the day, they have police out there.
Well, yeah, well, part, part of the problem is that there's a hill here.
Right.
Coming down Spring Hill Parkway, and the concern was that folks kind of coming in or out of this development would have, would there be potential for accidents because of the traffic on Spring Hill Parkway. So that's something that DOT can monitor, and like I said, the police go out and check the speed.
Okay.
So with that, I believe that it's okay for it to remain on consent.
Okay. So that, I now make a motion that we approve the consent agenda item as revised. You have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0. Next is yours. Z29.
Everyone that was on consent, if you're here today, you're free to go. The next item is the held case to be heard, Z29, A&amp;E Investments. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone opposed to Z29? Let the record show there's one in opposition.
Carol Brown.
In case of Z29, the applicant is requesting rezoning from GC General Commercial to Community Retail Commercial for the purpose of auto repair, auto restoration, and a motorcycle repair shop in landlots 60, 61, and 84 of the 16th
I have proposed a list of about 20 businesses that are possibly going to be going into this place as possible tenants. And these are just some plain, ordinary businesses that I kind of looked up and found them to be less maintenance, you know, in terms of messiness of operations and things like that. I did send a copy to Commissioner Brill, and I CC'd also Carol Brown. So Carol opposed a few, but majority of them were okay with her as well. And Commissioner Brill, I think, do you have a copy of the email? Okay. So there were a couple in question that I like to explain, that these are self, you know, small businesses that would operate with very low equipment, maintenance kind of thing. She opposed number 18. Number 18 is Auto Glass Repair Shop, which was basically...
Excuse me, sir. Could you do me a favor?
Yes.
Could you put, put that on the overhead and then read from the overhead? That way we can all see it, okay?
Sure. Sure. So number 18 is, it's not yet.
There you go.
Is it on the screen?
I didn't see.
So this is the email that was sent back and forth between Commissioner Brill and Carol and myself. And Ms. Carol Brown thinks that Auto Glass Repair would be not appropriate at the place, but Auto Glass Repair is actually quite simple. You remove the windshield, and you recycle the glass that comes out of the windshield, and basically reinstall another one, and you're done in less than 20 minutes. So there is pretty much low maintenance of type of a business that it is, which I think should be just as fine and appropriate. The other one, the other one was 1617, which is Ask John, and number 11, also Ask John. Those businesses, okay. So let me go back to the list and show you.
Thank you.
16 is Car Storage Facility, which would be storing mostly classic cars or like hot rods and things like that, that people would pay to have it stored throughout the year, or collector's cars, et cetera. So that's also a simple business that doesn't require anything other than just making a membership fee for people that would bring their cars and store them there. So that should be pretty simple as well. Number 11, Equipment Rentals, that's a potential business that might go in there because of how industrial that area is. So, and it's also very important to have a business like that in the neighborhood because you might have people that may want to rent the power washer, a trailer, or something else, you know? So you want to have a business like that in the neighborhood. There are actually not too many of these kind of businesses out there, because when I needed to rent equipment or trailer or other things, I had to go across town just to find a business that had it. So it makes sense to have that there. The other one is car rentals. I mean, it's just simple, it's car rentals. It's not, you know, you're not renting trucks, you're not renting anything that would create an issue for the community. Whether it's small cars or trucks, that's pretty much what's going to be rented out of there. If, this is basically potential businesses that may say, hey, I like the location, I'm interested in opening these kind of businesses out of this facility. So these are a few items that were not under the NRC statute or the ordinance that I added on there, that I think would be highly potential to the people that would rent this facility for these kind of businesses. And it would generate not only revenue to the community, but to everyone else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any questions, commissioners?
I think you're good. Thank you. Mr. Yakubova, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make sure I got it right. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Carol Brown, Canton Road Neighbors. I submitted my list with about 18 points last Wednesday at noon, and we're still, we received Mr. Yakubova's list late yesterday afternoon, and we're still trying to go over it back and forth. Everything in my letter dated July the 11th is a list of things that are allowable in the NRC code. You know, we don't want to see this denied, but, but we would appreciate limiting the uses to those that are enumerated in the code. His list, actually, many of the things on his list are, are allowed in NRC code, but there are some that aren't. And the ones where I just said to Ask John Peterson, well, because he is, you know, the final authority on matters related to zoning, and I just wanted to see if that could be run by Mr. Peterson. I do believe that there are some special exceptions, like animal hospitals, which is how it's described in the code, and athletic and health clubs that are allowed in the code, contractors specialized without heavy equipment. There are some things that aren't. And those that I thought were questionable, I just said, please Ask John Peterson. There is also something that concerned me. I believe he referred to a, an, a second point of ingress and egress, maybe to the rear of the property. I believe there's floodplain back there, a stream buffer, and I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. There are a lot of uses allowed in this zoning district, and he's not going to be limited, but, you know, there again, this isn't CRC. So I'm going to leave it to the board to look at these three long lists and see what they want to approve and disapprove. Thank you for your time.
Carol, one second, please.
Yes, sir.
Out of, out of your list and his list, how many of yours were on his list?
Quite a few, actually, were, I had referred to light automotive repair, and I'll have to bring it back up again, I'm still not used to this thing. He had, he had listed things like brake... He had, he had listed things like brake repair and, I don't know, lubrication, things like that. Those are allowed in light automotive repair.
Sure.
Um, I remember that one. And he had, uh, specifically listed banking or banks. That can go in there because it's allowed in N R C. There just, there are a number of things that he listed, and Commissioner Burrell has that list.
Okay.
I don't, I can't bring it up right now.
Well, I have one list from you, and then there was another one in the email. I didn't get that list. I just want, it, it seems like most of the lists are pretty close.
Yeah.
Ninety percent of the things that, that he wants, you concur with.
Yeah, but, but the intense use is like, uh, auto body collision. That's, that's a CRC.
Right, okay.
And.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any others? Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you. We did hear this last month, and we agreed to hold it so that the applicant could give us a list of uses that he would like to, um, request under N R C. And I've received his email at six thirteen last night, and I apologize for not forwarding it to everyone. He does have twenty uses, and I have gone through these with staff, um, Jason and John, um, response from Carol as well. And I'd kind of like to go through what, um, the ones that we, that I can agree to and, um, ones that are outside the N R C code and are in CRC, which is, um, ones we do not want to approve. So, um, I, I guess I'll go through the list first.
Ms. Chairman, could you, um, get the list back so that we can kind of? Because we don't, we don't have a copy of it.
I know. Okay. Okay, number one is auto repair shops. And that, I, I am going to go with the Planning Commission recommendation of auto collision and restoration work, including motorcycle repair.
I'm sorry. This is for N R C. I didn't think that was permitted in N R C.
As a contractor.
Yeah, I think it is.
As a light auto repair, but is collision considered light auto repair?
Yeah, that falls into the automotive paint and body. That's a use on its own, but.
That's, I'm sorry.
There's a separate use for paint and auto body repair. I guess the extent of something would determine if it goes into there or not.
Okay, so it should just be light automotive repair.
Could we be told as we go through this list which ones are CRC? Because, I mean, it's a long list in both categories. I mean, because I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about putting CRC things in N R C. So if we could, if we could know which ones are which.
Okay, all right, so we're good.
Okay, so number one, automotive repair shops, and just strike the including paint and body.
No, we're going to let her finish her motion, and then we'll bring you back, okay? Are you going to put light on there, light automotive repair?
Would you be?
No, just please, sir. We'll, we'll bring it back up, all right? Um, so we agreed that we'd put light auto repair on there.
Would you be amenable to?
That's N R C.
Yes, I'm just, okay, I'm, I'm just concerned why the Planning Commission recommended auto collision and restoration if it's not a special, sir? It, it's not a special exception or it could be a contractor, the special exception con, spec, for contractor or no?
Contractor, yes, but I would not include that with the contractor's office or a contractor's.
So number one will just read automotive repair.
Light.
Light automotive repair.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Number two, animal hospital kennels, clinics is fine. Number three, athletic and health clubs is fine. Four, bank and financial institutions is good. Number five, car maintenance such as brake repair, tire installation, tune-up, oil change, emissions is fine.
Yes, that's same thing, right, yeah.
Uh, number six, exterminating pest control company facilities is okay. Number seven, farm and garden supply stores, we need to strike that. That's not N R C.
Okay.
Jason, I'm asking verification from you.
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, number eight. Retail automobile parts and tire store is okay. Number nine, we need to strike radio recording and television studios. That's not an acceptable use. Uh, number ten is okay, plumbing and heating equipment dealers. Number eleven, equipment rentals, trailers, tools, and other is not an acceptable use. So we need to strike eleven. Uh, twelve is okay, motorcycle apparel and parts. For new and used for all motorcycle brands and just strike the name Harley Davidson.
Haley, Haley Davidson.
I mean, all motorcycle brands includes that. Thirteen, customizing shop motorcycles by painting and installing chrome parts and other parts, that's not, um, acceptable. Fourteen is okay, pet sitting facility or daycare for pets is okay. And fifteen, car detail shop. That's okay as far as like hand car wash, waxing inside, inside the building, yeah. Okay. Sixteen is not allowed, car storage facility. Seventeen, car rental facility is not, um, acceptable. Eighteen, auto.
Excuse me, when you say not acceptable, it's not included in that classic zoning? Or is it, you're not accepted?
Car storage facility, number sixteen is not N R C. It's not acceptable.
Then what's wrong with thirteen? Because it's no different than number one. It's just smaller.
That's body shop. That's co, that's body shop. Painting, painting.
What does number one say?
Light automotive repair.
Including?
Yeah, but she struck all of them.
I'm striking that.
She struck the left, the everything in parentheses, she struck.
Oh, okay, I must have missed that. I missed a lot. I'm getting confused on.
Okay, sixteen, car storage facility, no. Seventeen, car rental facility, no. Eighteen, auto glass repair shop, yes. Nineteen, glass and shower door shop, yes. And twenty, kitchen cabinet, cap, cabinetry and custom cabinets, yes. So that would be the list of acceptable uses, uh, for this parcel. And then I also have other, um, uh, remarks for my motion. Okay. And I'll have to get all these lists to the clerk because they're, um, all over the place. Okay. I would make a motion to delete Z twenty nine to the N R C zoning district subject to, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, um, I've got too many papers here. Okay. Delete the zoning to N R C, subject to, um, light automotive repair, limited to this owner, um, and occupant only. Motorcycle repairs permitted, no outside storage, inside work only. Hours of operation Monday through Saturday, eight AM to seven PM, closed on Sunday. District Commissioner to approve exterior paint color signage and landscaping plan. No ingress or egress to the rear of the subject property through the string buffer and floodplain. And staff comments, recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. And I'd like to include, um, Mr. Yak, Yakubova's email from July sixteenth and Ms. Carol Brown's letter dated July eleventh, um, for the record. And, um, that would be my motion.
Yep, do we have a second? Okay, we have a second.
I'll second.
No discussion, okay?
Yes, um.
Sure, go ahead.
Commissioner Burrell, um, the list of approved uses that you read before you read your motion, I didn't hear them incorporated in your motion except for light automotive repair and motorcycle repair for applicant and for this use only.
Okay. I would like to include all those that I read from the applicant's email last night and the ones that were removed or revised. And I'll give the clerk, do you want me to read them again?
If a power.
Into the motion?
Yes, it would be helpful if, I don't know if you struck, maybe if you could just read the, read the numbers or the actual.
Okay, number one, automotive, can you put the list back up? Number one, light automotive repair shop. Number two, animal hospital kennel clinics. Number three, athletic and health club. Number four, banks and financial institution. Number five, car maintenance facility, brake repair, insulation, tires, tune-up shop, oil change service, emission stations. Number six, exterminating and pest control company. Number seven is removed. So no farm and garden supplies. Number eight, retail automotive parts and tire store is acceptable. Number nine is removed. Number ten, plumbing and heating equipment dealers is acceptable. Number eleven, um, is removed, no equipment rentals. Number twelve, motorcycle apparel and parts for all motorcycle brands is included. Number thirteen is removed, no customizing shop motorcycles by painting. Number fourteen, pet sitting and facility or daycare for pe, pets is acceptable. Number fifteen, car detail shop is acceptable. Number sixteen, no co, no car storage facility, that needs to be removed. Number seventeen, no car rental, um, facility of any kind. So no car storage and no car rental. Number eighteen is good, auto glass repair shop and installation. Number nineteen, glass and shower door shop is acceptable. And number twenty, kitchen cabinetry and custom cabinets is good.
Thank you.
Any other further questions, Commissioner Kuehl?
No, Commissioner Rod.
Um, I have two questions, one for, um, Jason. So all the, from that list that Commissioner Burrell read, all those, none of those are CRC, correct?
The ones that she said no were.
Correct. So the ones that she's recommending approval.
N R C.
Are N R C owners.
Yes.
Okay, and then I have a question for Ms. Brown. Yes, please, just so it's on the mic. Since, um, I, we don't have your second letter, the one that had on the Ask John. So are all the issues that you sent to the board, were, have they all now been addressed?
Yes, sir, they have. The, the, the letter of the eleventh was sent to you all last Wednesday.
We have that one, but there was the other one.
Oh, that was just, that was an informal response in the back and forth late yesterday afternoon.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everything was addressed because I didn't think we had.
Commissioner Burrell has done a good job, and, and thank you.
Okay.
For y'all's help, thank you.
Mr. Yakubova. Okay, the first thing, before you make your comments, I just want you to know that since you submitted your list so late last night, um, the board has been more than tolerant on hearing this. I think you need to take that into consideration.
Right.
We could have very well said, so sorry, too late.
No, 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 that's fine, I agree with that.
But I just want you to know that, uh, you can see what we go through here trying to find the, trying to find what we call consensus.
Sure.
So, uh, you know, we want to help you, but we also want to make sure that we don't set precedent here.
Right.
And that, so with that, I believe you have a comment you want to make?
What we need to do is we need to listen to some of the other comments that you guys made during the previous hearings, because those comments specifically were, my whole objective was to maintain the body shop business out of that building. Everything else to me is useless. Why? Because adjacent building next to me, which is called the toy shop, is a fully functional body shop. The one next to it is a fully functional body shop. To my right, the building which is, um, um, uh, eight ninety, I think, or something like that, that's a mechanic shop that's already there. So by utilizing the, the low maintenance mechanic shop, there's already somebody there. Why would someone else go into this place? You know, it, it just, you guys, you guys told me.
All I could say is, we ought to respond to the zoning application.
No, no, I understand that, I understand that. But in the previous hearings, you guys told me that you would allow body shop per owner use, so now you're changing it.
Well, we're, we're allowing it within the zoning that we're going to.
Right, but now you're, you're telling me you don't want me to do body shop at all.
But this is the decision that we're going to be voting on here very shortly.
Right, but previously, in two other hearings, you guys said that we'll, we'll give you, because the whole purpose was to retain the body shop business out of the building. So it went from G C to CRC, uh, to CRC, and then you guys got rid of CRC and, and you said, well, we'll let you keep the auto body shop, and then we'll let you, we'll get rid of the CRC and give you N R C. And I said, it doesn't matter what you give me, as long as I retain the auto body industry out of that building.
Now, Commissioner Burrell.
Yeah. First of all, the Planning Commission is a recommending board.
I understand that.
They review the cases first, hear them, and make a recommendation to this board. At our last hearing, the Planning Commission heard this in June and made those recommendations.
Right.
At the June Planning Commission meeting. We heard this last month in June as well.
Right.
But we gave you a month to give us a list of uses.
Possible businesses that may go in there, yeah.
We got that at six thirteen last night.
I understand, but it's irrelevant when you got it.
Well, let me finish, please.
Go ahead.
Um, you're surrounded by G C, and you were G C. And you requested CRC. The reason you're in for rezoning is this is all a NAC now, Neighborhood Activity Center for the land use. You requested CRC, which is too intense for, for this. These folks that are G C around you, um, are grandfathered in because they've been there. You let, you were vacant for over a year, which you have to come back through zoning, or you would have kept the body shop.
Well, that was the whole purpose of applying for CRC.
You, you did, but that's not acceptable in a NAC, in the land use. So that's my motion, and, um, I, I don't know if I got a second or not.
We did, you did got a second. All right, so I, I appreciate your comments, you know, right? But again, you know, we'll, we'll be, we'll be voting here shortly on.
Sure, thank you.
Once I hear all the comments. Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments?
I understand the applicant's concerns, but Commissioner Burrell's, you know, dead on with it being a neck, what uses are acceptable, which is includes the NRC. And even though there may be existing uses consistent with what he desires, that's no longer in the future land use map or the intended direction of that community. It looks like they're trying to reduce the intensity of uses. So, I'm supportive of Commissioner.
Okay, with that.
I, I agree with Commissioner Cupid. I mean, the whole purpose of the future land use map is for the board to let folks know in the community what direction the board thinks that a particular area should go. Just because some things are grandfathered on either side of them, there's a reason why the rule is in place that if, if something loses its grandfather status, that it has to come in for rezoning. And so, it would be natural for this board, based on the future land use map, to scale back, which is basically what the future land use map is saying, is that this board believes that this area is a little bit too intense with the uses that are there. And so, the future land use map says that anything that comes in front of this board would more than likely going to be scaled back from the intended use, or the uses that are there now. And so, Commissioner Cupid's right, that's, that's what's happening here. And the rules are, it's been vacant for a year.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Well, a comment, Commissioner Otte said as well, I mean, if each, any of these come back for any changes of rezoning, they will lose what they have now because they have to fall into the new one. So, I mean, that's what we've done in the past. If you lose your grandfather in, you have to come back and you have to meet the new stipulations in our land use map. So, I, I agree.
Okay, well, then I'll call the question. The pass is five to zero. Okay, thank you.
The next case on the agenda is Z, on the regular case agenda is Z 36.
All right.
Edgardo Rivera Aguilera. The applicant is requesting rezoning from GC to R 20 for the purpose of a single family house in landlot 295 of the 17th district at 1279 Fair Oaks Avenue. Is the applicant present? As the record show, the applicant is here. Is there anyone opposed to Z 36? As the record show, there's no one opposed.
Good morning. So, our property right now, as of right now, is considered commercial. And we just wanted to build a residential house, one floor. It's going to be 2,475 feet, square feet. There's houses around the property as of right now. Recently, last year, they built two houses like 100 feet down the street from where our property stands. And we just, we just want to build a house there in order for us to live there. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, sir. Everybody have any questions of this young man? Commissioner Burrell? No, there wasn't.
Yes, th- this is really unfortunate decision, but for residential, you're in the flight path zone for Dobbins Air Force Base. And that, that's why the planning commission and staff have recommended denial. Well, I'm sorry, not denial, but deletion to OS. Because you are surrounded by commercial and commercial can go there, but residents can't because of the flight path. And I understand the hardship of, or wanting to build a house to live there, but for safety reasons, I can't agree to that. So, I'm going to make a motion to uphold the planning commission's recommendation of deletion of Z 36 to OS subject to final landscape and site plan to be approved by district commissioner and final approval of the use under OS to be approved by district commissioner and all staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict.
Do we have a second? Have a second discussion?
Question.
Sure.
Looking at this, it appears like there are homes all, presided on each side and there was a home here prior to this that was there. Unless I'm missing something. Looks like a house to the north, one to the east.
But isn't, didn't we get the new Dana, I don't know if Dana's still here, didn't we get the new zones for the airport?
Right.
You know, when they did the land use studies and that, this is actually probably a result of that, that, yeah, there might have been something there before, but based on the airport use and the, the plan that the county agreed to with Dobbins, that's why this is coming in the way it is.
Yeah, I guess I'm confused and we're worried about putting a house in the middle of houses because of safety reasons. It seems to me the houses that are already there should have a problem with safety reasons. And I know we can't ask them to move, but I, I, I just don't understand it and I'm not sure I agree.
I, I don't know how long they've been there, before or after the
No, I understand. I'm just saying.
Flight plan.
Commissioner Cupid?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Weatherford on this one. If you look at the flight path on both sides of Dobbins, this side of Dobbins has a lot less conflicting heights and development than the other side of the flight path. And this house that's being recommended today, even if you look at the existing heights of the homes that are here, it's one story, not even matching in the level of impact that the surrounding neighborhood has. I'm not aware, I would like to see specific language lifted from the Lockheed plan, which I don't have in front of me, to, to show that all residential is restricted from the flight path. And I'd also like to see the, the other flight path zone on the other side of Dobbins and for us to compare the uses on both sides and making a recommendation.
Well, but in the stat, in the staff comments, it says very clearly, the subject property is located in Dobbins Military Airport Hazard District and the aircraft's potential zone and noise contour too. So, what's happened is that, every, you know, they update these studies on a regular basis and the houses that were there before, all right, didn't, didn't fall into that, but not because of the change in nature of the aircraft at Dobbins, there might be a lot of variables that make that the case. So, you know, I, I think that the, the argument that's being made by the planning commission is that there are standards that have been applied and have been updated. And this house, like this last case we just heard, it's unfortunate that it's in an area that houses were before, but the new, the news aircraft potential zone, aircraft accident potential zone has been changed to reflect the changing flight, flight, flight activity around Dobbins. That's all I'm saying.
I respectfully, I mean, I, I agree with your concepts in part, with your statements in part, but not in its entirety. We approved Adventure Homes Town Home, not far from this area, below it, recognizing that the quality of housing in this area needed to change. Also, if you look at the nature of neighborhood retail along Atlanta Road, it is being developed with, to, to me, neighborhood retail implies that there's a neighborhood around it to support that commercial. And it's been improving to support an area which has been languishing in development. If you look at Atlanta Road and the tree, and from the city of Smyrna and everything that they're doing along Atlanta Road, not immediately in the flight path, is showing that there is support for residential character of this area. And I feel like this particular area is being uniquely, uniquely and detrimentally impacted by how we are choosing to apply the study for Lockheed Dobbins. And I don't see that being translated in how we're developing on the other side of, of, of Lockheed Dobbins, which is why I am very concerned. I would like to see specific language, specific language from that. And I also would like to see a map, if that can be shown on the screen, to show the other flight path zone on the other side of Lockheed's. And let's compare the, the scope of development.
Falling on that, if you notice, I mean, I guess what I'm concerned, because everything around there, or at least to the west, is R 20. So, it's in the flight path as well. We currently have it zoned R 20. Shouldn't we change the zoning for all of this? If, is that what we're trying to do? We're trying to change this one parcel to OS and then, but yet there's homes, there's trailer parks, there's everything around there. I don't see how we can deny one when there's probably close dozens, if not more, around there, it's already there. I, I'm just confused.
Mr. Chairman, I think if you look on, I don't know what the page number is, it's under Department Comments, Planning Division.
Right.
One of the things and the reason there were some changes made with the study is that the FAA changed the designation, all right? So, the aircraft potential zone one, which is the most critical of the two, there's two aircraft potential, accident potential zones. Number one is the most critical because if a plane has a problem on takeoff, that's when they're going to have the most issues. And this, according to staff, this is located in the aircraft potential, accident potential zone one and it's also in a noise zone. And so, you know, and some of the, some of this, the reason is because the FAA and the military have changed the rules that apply to try and make things safer for the community.
I, I get, I get your point on this side of, of the, of the board. But remember, we just had a case here where people built certain buildings based on a certain zoning, land use map, and we changed that. Well, we have an updated map that now says that where they're trying to build this house, it is in an aircraft potential accident zone because of the FAA standards. And we just can't ignore those standards because the fact everything around is R 20. Those people that are in that area, you know, they're not going to move, but they have, they, they know that if something happens on takeoff, look at the runway, all right? All they have to do is lose an engine. And, you know, there's a potential area that everything inside the second area here is going to be impacted and those that are living in that area, that's the risk they take. But why are we going to approve a house knowing full well that the FAA has told us that that area now is in an aircraft potential zone one?
We're, because we are choosing to decimate a community.
It's already been decimated because they've been built.
Ask those residents that have been living there for several years if they don't deserve to have some semblance of a quality of life there. And I've asked for it multiple times and I would like to see the same APs, what is it? The flight zone, I would like to see it on the opposite side of the space, if that map can be pulled up.
Okay.
And if somebody can share what uses are here and what, what road this is. That are, to me, that are greater height and have a greater impact. We have, to me, I, this area used to be in District Four until the maps were recently changed. And every time we've had a, a development to support the improvement of this community, I've supported it because that area, even prior to this agreement with Dobbins, has been languishing. It's been an older community that has been bypassed. It's a shame how we in Cobb County have let this area just fall into disrepair. And what we're saying is, because of this plan here, just to, to pop with it. And I feel as if for those that are trying to have some semblance of community there, for the other developments that we see going around in this community, you have someone trying to build something new which has minimal impact to this community as compared to the other developments in the flight path zone. I just find it to be, I, I find it to be very hard for those residents who have just lived in a very languished, underserved area of this county that has gone under the radar.
Okay. All right, well, that's, any other comments? So, if, if you vote for this and you're voting for the OS, the deletion of OS.
Correct.
If you vote against it, you're voting to, to oppose the deletion to OS, okay? Everybody understand that vote? Okay, with that, I'll call the question. And it passes three to two. Well, that, are there any cases? I think we're done, right?
No, sir, that was it.
Okay, we're in charge.